County Planning Commission into order tonight for July the 7th, 2020-22. Before we begin tonight, I'd ask our counsel, Mr. Hampton Moore, to swear in our newest member.
Shaw, are you prepared to take the oath as Planning Commissioner? If so, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this Commonwealth and be faithful and true to the Commonwealth of Kentucky so long as you continue a citizen thereof? And that you'll faithfully execute to the best of your ability the office of Planning Commissioner according to law? And do you further solemnly swear that since the adoption of the present Constitution, you being a citizen of this state have not fought a duel with a deadly weapon within the state nor out of it? Nor have you sent or accepted a challenge to fight a duel with a deadly weapon? Nor have you acted as a second in carrying a challenge or aided or assisted any person thus offended? So help you God, if so, answer "I do."
I do.
Congratulations.[82.11][82.11](Laughter).
Miss Shaw, that will be the hardest thing you have to do.[90.42][90.42](Laughter). We welcome you to the commission and thank you for your service. All right. We have a roll call. McKenna, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Drain. Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, McKenna. You have the minutes of our June the 2nd meeting in your packet. Are there any questions? I would call for a motion, please.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Dan.
Commissioner Vitale.
Dan.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Now, we're into our public hearing. Mr. Moore, would you administer the oath, please?
Yes, sir. Chair Warren. I request that you order that the record tonight include all of the relevant statutory and regulatory provisions before you. The commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to each of those witnesses.
Swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. In your packets tonight, you have your subdivision site development plans. They were mailed out. Are there any questions? Then they will be approved as submitted. Is there any old business, Ben? No old business? We now enter to our public hearing for tonight. Our first item tonight is 2022-02-DP, Seven Plus LLC care of mispronounced name, apologize, Onazi Nawagma and Morgantown Bank and Trust care of Allen Bell have filed an application to amend the general development plan, development plan conditions on a tract of land containing approximately 10.62 acres located at 01848 Morgantown Road and 0 Walnut Creek Drive. This property is owned PUD with a general development plan. Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting in April for the development you just outlined on Morgantown Road and Walnut Creek Drive involving the properties in yellow and also including the existing bank at the corner. The applicants have proposed to amend their current development plan that was most recently amended in 2018. The purpose of the amendment this evening includes a proposal to allow greater flexibility in lot sizes, number of lots, building size, number of buildings, an increase in density, increased building height, and change in the location and placement of buildings and parking. The current zoning, as you mentioned, is PUD, planned unit development. There are vacant parcels within the development. Some of it's still used for agricultural use, and then the bank at the corner is designated as commercial. The future land use designation for the properties is mixed-use commercial. And this is the concept plan that was submitted for the development plan amendment. I'm going to touch on a few items in the staff report, mainly looking on page three under the site design and compatibility review. We've noted that the surrounding densities, either existing or future approved densities, range from 9.06 dwelling units per acre to 32.5 dwelling units per acre. The density for the proposed development, including the amendments this evening, is 20.51 dwelling units per acre. The current density that's approved for the development plan now is 17.98, so they are proposing to increase that slightly. Looking under the surrounding architectural features, staff has noted that the majority of the residences in the area are one- and two-story structures and that the existing bank is one-story. The current development plan allows a maximum building height of 55 feet with a proposed amendment to increase that building height to 65 feet. Just a few things to touch on in the traffic impact study section. There was a traffic impact study conducted in 2005 when the property was rezoned originally, and some of the improvements in that study have already been implemented. The applicants have acknowledged in their application that an additional traffic impact study may be required and incorporated as part of the comprehensive development review process and would be reviewed by that committee during future phases of the development. Looking at the changes to the development plan conditions, a lot of them look like they're being deleted, but if you look in the next few pages, they were just relocated because some of them were listed both in the conditions and the concept plan and it was redundant. So it looks like they're trying to delete a lot, but that's not actually the case. A few things are actually being removed, but they're already required, such as connecting to sewer and meeting fire protection requirements, things of that nature. They are proposing to impose a maximum number of dwelling units of 48. That's the last item there at the bottom. And then for a PUD or planned unit development, part of the application requirement involves submitting a written narrative or a concept plan that identifies things that are specific to the planned unit development. And so that's the next section we've gone through and tried to highlight some of the main changes. Again, some of the things that are underlined are just things that were moved from the conditions into this section, so I'll try and touch on the main things that are really part of the amendment that you're considering this evening. The first would be the second underlined paragraph. It says that "Attached here too and incorporated by reference is Concept I," which is this concept here. "This concept depicts possible development, partition, and building placement, but is not intended to prohibit alternative building size, number, placement, or alignment not otherwise inconsistent with the property's development plan conditions. Notwithstanding the foregoing, any convenience store and/or gas station shall be generally located on the western corner of the development," which would be this orange shaded area here, "with frontage along and access upon US 231. Moreover, any multifamily development shall generally be located upon the northeastern corner of the property," which would be this location here. Looking on page six, noting one change, again, they are proposing to increase the current approved building height of 55 to 65 feet. Jumping down to the zoning ordinance requirements, Section 312-8 of the zoning ordinance outlines the requirements for amending a development plan and states that "any amendment to a development plan condition for an approved development plan shall be approved only if the proposed amendment remains consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan and upon a finding that there have been major changes of an economic, physical, or social nature in the area which were not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the development plan that is being amended, or that there have developed physical conditions which would not permit development of the property in question in accordance with the general development plan or the conditions that are being amended." And so the italicized text in the central portion of page seven came directly from the application itself, and the applicants have stated that "increased flexibility concerning the property's further division and applicable setbacks is necessary so as to allow the development of the property given the prospective buyer's needs. These prospective buyers have materialized since the adoption of the property's most recent general development plan." So again, that's what the applicants supplied on their application. So again, the applicants are proposing to amend the development plan this evening in order to allow greater flexibility in lot sizes, number of lots, building size, number of buildings, and increase in density, increase building height, and change in the location and placement of buildings and parking. The planning commission should determine if the applicants have met the criteria to amend the development plan, as the supporting information provided on the application only addresses further subdivision of the development. Setbacks are mentioned, but there are not any changes to the setbacks proposed as a part of the application. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, there are a few items for your consideration, the first being LU 1.1.3. "The planning commission should determine if the proposed development plan amendment is compatible with the area." LU 2 looks at quality of development and character of the area. LU 252, HN 1, and HN 1.3 look at character and pattern of development and the impact of the development plan amendment on nearby neighborhoods. And last, for your consideration on page eight, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at suitability of the proposed housing type and density, and if the proposal will enhance housing options available in the area. I'll wrap up on page one with our points to consider. The application does comply with the majority of the criteria that the staff evaluated during the review process. The planning commission should determine if the proposed amendment, including an increase in density and an increase in building height and change in location of the placement of buildings and parking, is compatible with the surrounding area. And last, the planning commission should determine if the applicants have supplied sufficient evidence to support the development plan amendment. That is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Hurd?
Rachel, I have two questions. One is the 48 multifamily units that they want to go to. Was it 48 in the prior?
Yeah, the previous development plan called for a larger lot where the multifamily development is proposed, so by reducing the lot size, the density increased.
Okay, but we're not adding any new units, number of units?
Right. The number of units is the same as what was proposed previously.
Okay.
It's just that the lot, if we're looking at the concept plan here, on the previous development plan amendment in 2018, the multifamily lot was shown as a larger lot, and they're wanting to shrink it, so the density has increased just because the lot is getting smaller.
Obviously, they wanted to go three-story.
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so. They can answer that. I know that the height, they're proposing to increase that. I can't remember if the plan is for two or three stories, but I would anticipate that may be the case because of the height that's requested.
All right. Then the other question is, is this the same owner that was here in 2018?
Yes.
Okay.
Rachel, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
The selective commercial uses, has the applicant indicated what those are?
No, there's a list of potential commercial uses that are listed on page five. Those include retail sales and service, restaurants, which would include fast food and drive-through options, limited vehicle service, office professional uses, medical offices, and that's it for the commercial element. There is the incorporation of the multifamily use as well. And then they've also prohibited some certain uses as well.
And this would be, in the area, this would be our only three-story building, correct, in the area?
Yeah, when we did our review in the site design section of the staff report, we noted that the existing structures in the area are one- and two-stories.
Okay. So Rachel, a couple of questions, if I may. The DPCs do, so for example, I see 80% brick, glass, or stone. Are the DPCs different for the residential and commercial, or is it the same DPCs for the entire project?
It's the same for all uses.
So the previous zoning was PUD as well?
Yes.
And so they've made the lot size smaller. Any change in amenities?
Change in what? I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Amenities such as clubhouse, pool, anything that they put in or took out for the residential portion of it?
No, I'm going from memory, but I don't believe the previous development plan included any type of amenities for the residential component.
So to your knowledge, I read the narrative that the applicant supplied, they're trying to make space for something else additional here, it appears. And so to your knowledge, is that a commercial component, or is that something else?
I think the main thing that triggered this application is the multifamily development in this corner. I think there was a misunderstanding with the last application that a planned unit development is just that, it's planned, and whatever you agree to in your concept plan, whether that be your lot size, or the uses, or the location of your buildings and the location of your parking, it's pretty locked in. And so I think once they got into the engineering and design, they wanted the flexibility to try and move some things around, shift lot lines, and I don't think they fully understood in 2018 that a PUD, while flexible on the front end to where you can have flexibility in your design, on the back end, it's not necessarily flexible and you're pretty locked into what you've already agreed to. So I think just the current multifamily development that's planned is what has triggered this application. They may be able to speak more about that, but I think that was at least one of the main reasons this was filed.
Good, thank you. To your knowledge, do we have any elevations for the new structures?
They were not supplied with the application. I think they have elevations that may have been turned in through the site development plan process. They may be able to answer that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Graham, Mr. Volker. Commissioners, any other questions for Rachel? Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Is the applicant here, or their representative, please?
Evening, Commissioners Chris Davenport, 921 College, and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Davenport.
Let me give just a little bit more history, then I'm going to get right to the questions y'all had. The property was originally zoned PUD, I believe, in '05. I wasn't involved in that application. In '18, it came back to this board to amend that PUD. I was not involved at that time either. My understanding, the primary reason in '18 was to include the multifamily use. I believe the original PUD was all commercial. So in '18, there was a desire to add some multifamily component, same number of units, 48, that hasn't changed. And so that was brought in '18. And then as Rachel kind of spoke to, in the meantime, sometime between '18 and today, and really more recently, they went to a site development review process. Dr. Wanguma, who's the principal of Seven Plus, my client, and when they did that, that's when they determined that what they were now intending to do with the property wasn't going to work with the current PUD. I think the multifamily had been, the buyers of that had targeted a different parcel of the property, basically what you see in front of you. I think that the concept plan that was submitted in '18 had it more towards the left of your diagram or your concept, so that needed to be changed because they just couldn't pull permits because the deviation from that concept was too great. That is the principal reason this is before you tonight. So along those lines, I want to make a few things clear. There are no uses allowed, if this were to pass, that are not currently allowed. The same uses would be allowed and the same uses would be prohibited. There would be no increase in the number of multifamily units should this pass, as opposed to what's allowed. There would be no change in the story of the multifamily structure. It would still be three stories. So you may say, well, the current PUD restrictions allow for 55 feet in height. Chris, you're asking for 65 feet. If you don't intend to add stories, why the change in height? The elevations that were provided and the plans that were provided at the site development review process had three-story buildings, but with the, I'm going to pronounce cupolas, I'm sure I'm saying that wrong, but with some of the ornamental features of the building, the top of the building extended past 55 feet. It was about 60 feet 3 inches, I believe, is what the staff told me. So I rounded up and asked for a restriction of 65. But what you're looking at there are two 24 plexes, three-story buildings. So what precipitated this request primarily was not seeking new uses or additional uses, but reconfiguring how we think the property will now be developed, given the interest that Dr. Wanguma has had from other parties. One thing I'll stress here is, in 2005, somewhat 17 years ago, right, this property was rezoned to allow commercial uses. It sat there for 13 years, and apart from the bank, was not developed. So hence the interest in multifamily. All that is to say, that area town has not had the same development pressure that we're well aware of in other areas. So Dr. Wanguma is trying to create a little bit more flexibility so as to allow the development of the property. I think I've answered all the concerns or tried to address those that you all brought up, but Thad Lucas is here. He's the engineer that was involved in the interim and basically suggested that Dr. Wanguma get some help with the PUD so that we can get it, you know, in a way that he can develop this property. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chris, so are each floor 15 feet in height? I mean, six, I mean, three-story building at 10-foot ceilings is 30 feet, add the roof and everything. I don't understand the 60.
I mean, I asked Thad that same question, and in fact, I went back and pulled because, I mean, this morning, I was looking at his application, you know, we all get accustomed to how these multifamily buildings are laid out. They're always multiples of four, right? I mean, you don't see multiples of anything else. So I'm looking at two structures, 48 units. My Grayson County math tells me that's 24 units of structure, right, eight units per floor. So Ben's laughing at my reference there. We can't all go to Greenwood, Ben.
All right.
So I don't know if Thad has familiarity with those elevations or not. I really don't, but again, that's the goal.
So Chris, let's go more direct. Do you have elevations that we could see?
I do not have elevations, Mr. Graham.
Does your applicant have elevations that we could see?
Just a minute, sir, just a minute. Let him, let Mr. Davenport, we'll call you to.
I think what Dr. Wanguma is saying, that those could be provided, but we don't have those with us. They were not submitted with the application.
Do you mind if, and in fact, it might be appropriate to ask Thad, if somebody knows, I can't get to 65 feet here, it would take an enormous cupola to get to 65 feet. And so what I'm trying to figure out is, what are we really doing here? Something's missing. So, and the other question I've got, so are we really, at the end of the day, are we shrinking, are we shrinking the lot for the multifamily?
Density's gone up some, so the way they've calculated the density here, it obviously had to have because the numerator didn't change.
So do I have, with my multifamily, do I have any green space?
You do, but let me remind the staff of the commission of one thing that we did here. Rachel read to you the provision that said that this concept, that these structures would be laid out generally where they are in the concept with regard to the multifamily and the convenience store. The purpose of that is, the different lines where these boundaries are, I intended that language to suggest that if you brought this up to scale, that's not necessarily where the footprint of that building is going to be. And that's not necessarily the distance between that parking and that building, so forth and so on, because that's part of, as I understand it, the difficulty Thad ran into. That's what the permitting officials were looking at. And so we know the convenience store has to be on that corner because the transportation folks say that's where those two curb cuts have to be. And we know that the multifamily is going to go in its spot, given the developer's intentions there. So what I'm saying, I guess what I'm saying is, it was not in my intention to change the density, but when the staff looked at the layout and the relative areas here, I think that's how that calculation occurred.
And so will your applicant be okay sticking with the 55 feet?
I asked them that. One more point I want to make on green space that was not mentioned, it is in your staff report, Rachel didn't mention it. The current DPC and/or narrative concept plan for the PUD says that the lot coverage will not, excuse me, that the development coverage won't exceed 85. One thing they wanted my client to do, which he agreed to, is we change that language to each lot shall not exceed 85% lot coverage, which does make more sense. It doesn't allow someone in it to develop a commercial lot with 90% and say, now someone else in this PUD's got to pick up my 5%. So the lot coverage cannot exceed that on any lot.
So Chris, one last point of clarification. Going back to what you stated previously, it was your intent to basically designate the area or the space where this is going to be located, not necessarily, this is exactly how it's going.
Not the meets and bounds.
Got it.
Correct. And again, I think what should give this commission some peace of mind is that changing of that restriction that no lot shall exceed 85% lot coverage. It means every lot has to be in compliance with that part of the ordinance.
If it's appropriate, can we ask Thad? I'm just curious, do we have any elevations, or is that something that the height restriction is something we would be willing to just forego?
Let me talk to my client, and I'll tell you why. I initially submitted this with a 55, I didn't change that initially. And when staff mentioned the elevation that had been brought up at one of their design review meetings, that's when I changed it. So it was not in the original request. So it may be something that we can forego.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I may add to that. That's true, and that's on page 34. That's the very last page where we had noticed in our review that the elevations submitted through the comprehensive development review process showed the building heights to be 60 feet 3 inches.
And that was a three-story structure that was 60 feet 3 inches?
That's what was listed on the elevations.
That's not possible.
You got to understand that that's going to include at grade around that building. So I don't know exactly how this property lays, and it's going to go all the way to the top of anything up there.
So are you saying that the topography, I thought the 60 feet was from grade. Okay, so topography wouldn't make a difference there?
I can say this, we can change that, okay? We can put that back to 55 feet.
Okay, very good. I think that gets us there.
Yeah, that way, I think that will get rid of that issue. And I can have Dr. Wanguma up and come.
Let's see if there's any more questions from the commission. Thank you, Mr. Davenport. Would you call your applicant up here?
Dr. Wanguma?
Yes.
Dr. Wanguma, would you state your name and your address, please, sir?
Onyosiri Wanguma, 908 Three Wood Circle.
And you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. You've heard Mr. Davenport's amendment to the application, that the building heights would not exceed 55 feet. Do you agree to that?
I think that will be sufficient.
Do you agree to it?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Mr. Moore, do you want to?
I think that does it, that falls down only to the development plan conditions, but also the concept plan.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has a question about this application or opposition to this request? Hearing none. Commissioners, if we call for a motion, please.
I make a motion to approve the proposed general development plan amendment, docket number 2022-02-DP, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed general development plan amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Further, I also find that there have been major changes of economic, physical, or social nature within the area of the property in question, and I request that the findings of fact and recommendation include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Dan.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion passed and will be submitted to the Warren. The motion passed and will be, uh, submitted to, uh, the Warren, where's it go?
For final action.
Yeah, to, uh, it's final action. Excuse me, I'm sorry, we've got to get it all right tonight. Thank you very much. Our next item tonight is, uh, is clear. I'm sorry, what?
He's going to go get Greg.
Our next item tonight is Clearfork Baptist Church care of Chad Bealy has filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately four-point-five acres located one fifty-eight and three oh-three Clearfork Church spur road from agricultural to RE residential estate and a rural residential with a general development plan. Also, Clearfork Baptist Church care of Chad Bealy has filed an application to operate a religious institution on the property located three oh-three Clearfork Church spur road. This property is owned agriculture with concurrent application filed to be rezoned to RR rural Clearfork Baptist Church care of Chad Bealy has applied for a waiver from the maximum lot coverage on a tract of land located three oh-three Clearfork Church spur road. This property is owned agriculture with a concurrent application filed to be rezoned to RR rural residential. Thank you.
That's all of it. All right, we had a pre-application meeting on February eleventh for the property that you just described and that is highlighted in yellow. Uh, the current zoning is agriculture. Current land use is public institutional. Um, the future land use is agriculture. Proposed zoning is RR and RE. Proposed land use is public institutional and single-family residential. Here is the concept that the applicant supplied for you to review. Uh, as you mentioned, the applicants are proposing to rezone four-point-five-seven-one acres to RE and RR in order to subdivide the existing residence on one acre. Uh, the remaining portion of the property is proposed to be rezoned to RR, um, will remain as is and continue to be utilized by the church. A conditional use permit is required to operate a religious institution in the RR zone, which is the reason for the CUP request. Uh, and the applicants are also requesting a thirteen percent waiver from the maximum thirty percent lot coverage requirement in the RR zone. Looking over to the third page, uh, the applicants have submitted, uh, the following development plan conditions. Uh, if the existing house is destroyed by accident or in any other way, it is to be relocated with a similar-sized house, structures to be built in accordance with local building codes, uh, and must be brick, uh, with a brick foundation, no manufactured homes or modular homes allowed. Uh, number two, the existing residents will continue to utilize the existing septic system located on the property, and in the event, uh, the existing home is ever replaced, the Bayern River Health Department, uh, will do the inspection. Uh, and then if any new home is, uh, being constructed on the property as well. Number three, no farm animals or exotic pets, cats and dogs only. Uh, number four, storage and/or auxiliary buildings are limited to one building, not to exceed twenty by twenty in size, and must be built of vinyl, metal, or brickstone. Uh, number five, there are, uh, very large mature trees on the property that may not be removed, removed unless dead or deceased. Number six, no semi-track parking. Number seven, any and all fencing must be wood, plastic, chain link, uh, or iron and/or steel. Number eight, any change in access to the property must be coordinated with the Warren County Road Department. Uh, number nine, the current asphalt driveways are to remain as such and be maintained. Any future driveways or parking areas installed on the property shall be asphalt and maintained. Uh, moving down to the focus twenty-thirty category review, uh, staff evaluated fifteen items for compliance. Uh, I will bring your attention to, um, page four. Um, the planning commission should determine compliance with LU two-point-one-point-one. Uh, the maximum allowable lot coverage is thirty percent in the RR zone. However, with the successful, with the success of this, uh, proposed application, including the, uh, waiver, the lot coverage for the church parcel will remain at its current coverage of forty-three percent. Now moving down to the, uh, conditional use permit portion of the application, uh, we have supplied the zoning ordinance reference and the, uh, conditional use permit findings for you. The applicants have agreed to the following condition as part of their application. Church-related activities shall take place between six AM to eleven PM with exceptions for special events and holidays. Uh, looking over to the waiver portion of the application, we have supplied the zoning ordinance reference and waiver findings there for you. But essentially, the applicants are requesting, again, a waiver of thirteen percent to allow for a total lot coverage of forty-three percent. And, uh, if you flip over to the next page, the applicants have supplied, um, the following narrative, uh, to, uh, to, to meet their waiver requests, the proposed waiver will not alter the character of the vicinity or cause a hazard or a nuisance to the public as the only thing proposed to change is the subdivision of the property into two parcels. Uh, all improvements on the church property will remain as is. Looking at the first page, two of the points to consider. Uh, again, the current uses and exterior improvements on the site are proposed to remain as is. The only thing proposed to change as part of this application is to subdivide the church and existing single-family residence into independent lots, and, uh, the applications comply with a majority of the criteria assessed by staff during the review process. So that is all we have for our staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
Commissioners, any questions?
So let me just make sure I understand, uh, the church is located on, let's say, lot number one, and then there's a residence on lot number two, is that correct?
On the proposed lot number two.
On proposed lot number two.
Just looking at carving off.
I see.
Residence.
Very good, all right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you very much. Is the applicant here or their representative and would like to add anything to the presentation?
One here that I want to add.
All right, thank you very much. Uh, we appreciate you being here tonight. Uh, is there anyone in the audience that has a question or opposition to this request? Okay, hearing none, we have three, we have three amendments to this application, uh, that are in your packet to approve this, the, uh, rezoning, uh, to, and number three, to, uh, uh, rezone from RR rural residential, and then the variance. So I would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditions upon our general development plan, docket number twenty-two-two-four-two-Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty-thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objections, objectives, and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the zoning map amendment is in agreement with the comprehensive plan. Further requests, the motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay. Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Good to stand.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Her next, uh, motion is to, uh, conditional use.
Make a motion to approve the conditional use permit, docket number twenty-two-two-C forty-seven, for a religious institution located at three oh-three Clearfork Church spur road with conditions as presented in the staff report. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the use is not detrimental to public health, safety, welfare in the zone in which it was proposed, the use will not contribute toward an overburdening of municipal services, the use will not result in increased traffic congestion, additional parking problems, substantial increase in population density, environmental problems, or constitute a nuisance, and that the use otherwise meets the requirements of the zoning ordinance.
Commissioner Gay.
Ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Good to stand.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Next motion is for the waiver of three oh-three Clearfork Church spur road.
I make the motion to approve the request for a waiver for a portion of three oh-three Clearfork Church spur road, docket number twenty-two-two-V twelve, a waiver of thirteen percent to allow a total lot coverage of forty-three percent for the property. The testimony presented in this public hearing has shown that the granting of this waiver would not adversely affect the public health, safety, or welfare, will not alter the essential character of the general vicinity, will not cause a hazard or nuisance to the public, and will not allow an unreasonable circumvention of the requirements of the zoning regulations. I further find that the waiver will not violate the comprehensive plan. The extent of waiver of the regulation is the minimum necessary to afford relief to the applicant and either. The applicant has incorporated other design measures that exceed the minimums of the district and compensate for non-compliance with the requirements to be waived, in parentheses, not beneficial effect. Or two, the requested waiver arises with special circumstances which do not generally apply to the land in the general vicinity or the same zone, or the restriction applicant of the provisions of the regulations will not deprive the applicant of the reasonable use of the land, or would create an unnecessary hardship on the applicant.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Good to stand.
And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved and goes to Warren County Fiscal Court. Thank you all for being here tonight. Is the council here for the Weston Apartments? Just make sure you're here, we'll keep going in the, in the right order. Our next item tonight is twenty-two-two-four-three-Z BG, Weston Apartments LLC care of David Alfred have filed an application to rezone a tract of land containing approximately twenty acres located zero Southwest Parkway and five-eight-six-five Russellville Road from Ag to Light Industrial with a general development plan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, we had a pre-application meeting, uh, on August fourth, uh, of twenty-twenty-one for the, um, property that you outlined and that is highlighted in yellow. Uh, the current zoning is agriculture. Uh, the current land use is agriculture and single-family residential. Um, the future land use is mixed-use commercial, and, uh, the proposed land use is industrial. Uh, here is the, uh, the concept that the applicant supplied, uh, for you to review. As you mentioned, the applicants are proposing to rezone twenty acres located at zero Southwest Parkway and a portion of fifty-eight-sixty-five Russellville Road from agriculture to light industrial in order to develop the property with a variety of light industrial uses. Uh, looking over to the future land use map, uh, the applicant submitted the following narrative to help address, uh, compatibility. Uh, the future land use map designation for the subject property is mixed-use commercial, which envisions environmentally friendly, uh, manufacturing. According to the proposed zone change from Ag to, uh, light industrial is consistent with the flume. Uh, completion of the Southwest Parkway, which was built to handle traffic from the nearby industrial park, is a major economic and physical, uh, change. Further, in twenty-twenty-one, twenty-point-four-five acres across the road were, uh, zoned to light industrial. Uh, also, other nearby properties have been zoned for light industrial, heavy industrial, and highway business uses. Uh, it is envisioned the property will be home to new businesses that will conduct light manufacturing activities. Uh, the property will have ample open space with quality architecture, uh, will maximize the value and promote visible quality, visual quality as, uh, this area along the new Parkway is developed. Further, as the subject property is in close proximity to the south industrial park, the zone change will provide, uh, for an orderly expansion of industrial property and facilitate further economic development and job creation in our community. Uh, looking down to the site characteristics review, uh, this application complies with the majority of the criteria evaluated in the site characteristics review, with exception noted regarding the historic home that is located in the property. Uh, the applicant's plan to demolish the residence to accommodate the proposed development. Looking down at site design and compatibility review, specifically building materials review, uh, structures in the vicinity are a mixture of brick, vinyl, and metal. Uh, the Walnut Valley focal point plan encourages, uh, setting standards for quality development in the focal point area by establishing minimum design standards, and that all building exterior facades and materials should be reviewed by a committee of professionals such as architects, planners, uh, and others. Uh, so now looking down to the, uh, area-specific policy review, um, staff found five applicable policies, uh, in the Walnut Valley focal point. Uh, one A, uh, addresses infrastructure. Um, the proposed development is within two thousand feet of a public sanitary sewer and will have to connect. Uh, the applicants have committed, uh, that all service, uh, utility grounds will be located underground, uh, and the proposal generally complies with this policy. Uh, looking at one B, uh, this addresses parking. Uh, DPC number two requires all parking be set back at least twenty-five feet from the Southwest Parkway. Uh, DPC, uh, number thirteen requires that fifty percent of all required parking be in the rear, uh, of the front building line for each lot, and, uh, the, the proposal generally complies with, uh, one B. Uh, looking at three A, uh, this addresses design standards and building materials. Uh, the applicant's agreed in, uh, DPC number eight, uh, to minimize building material requirements. The office or administrative portion of the building shall have exterior walls of durable and attractive materials such as, but not limited to, brickstone exposed aggregate, textured concrete, glass, or designer blocks, uh, for all portions of a building, uh, from ground level to height of at least six feet. Uh, the exterior wall and the two exterior sidewall shall be constructed of high-quality and durable materials such as, but not limited to, brickstone exposed aggregate, textured concrete, glass, or designer blocks. Uh, the planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Uh, looking at three B, uh, this addresses the, uh, zoning. Commercial zoning should be limited to planned unit development, office professional, neighborhood business, and general business. Um, light industrial is the proposed, uh, proposed zone for this development. The proposal does not comply with this policy. Looking at three C, uh, this, uh, addresses signage. Uh, the applicants agreed in DPC number nine to the minimum signage requirement, uh, of this policy as well as that each freestanding sign shall be no more than ten feet high with one hundred feet, uh, one hundred square feet in sign face. The proposal generally complies with this policy. Um, the proposal complies with three of the policies and does not comply with one policy. And one, uh, one of the policies should, should be determined by the planning commission. Uh, now moving down to the general development plan conditions, the applicant submitted the following. Uh, all primary structures will be oriented to face the Southwest Parkway or have frontage-facing facade toward the Southwest Parkway. Uh, again, number two is that, that parking that we mentioned, uh, earlier. Um, number three, uh, all access points along Kobe Way and Southwest Parkway will be coordinated with the city of Bulling Green. Um, number four, uh, property as a whole shall contain at least twenty percent open space. Uh, all development shall provide a minimum of ten percent interior, uh, VUA landscaping and, uh, planting alleys or peninsulas, and paved parking areas shall be set back at least fifteen feet from any property line. Uh, number five addresses, uh, tree preservation. Uh, number six, loading docks, vehicle, uh, use areas, public use areas, and outside storage areas shall be screened from adjacent residential development. shall be screened from adjacent residential developments or from public streets. Number seventeen addresses any new service utility lines that will go to the property. Number eight, minimum acceptable design standards for all permanent primary and accessory buildings constructed of the property shall include, again, it mentions the design materials that we talked about a moment ago. Number nine addresses the signage that we, that we mentioned. Number ten, no use of the property may have or make products which could be hazardous to human life and property until provisions for the proper control thereof have been made in accordance with all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. Number eleven, the following uses shall not be permitted and are prohibited on the property. Mining, oil and gas production, tannery, commercial parking, manufactured and mobile home sales, and adult entertainment. Number twelve addresses sinkholes. Again, number thirteen is addresses part of the parking requirement that will be located in the rear of the building. Number fourteen, for a period of not less than ten years from the effective date of these development plan conditions, the property will not be subdivided into more than two lots. And number fifteen addresses the salvageable materials from the current residence that is proposed to be torn down. Looking over at the Focus 2020 category review, staff evaluated seventeen items for compliance. The proposal may comply with LU two if the planning commission deems the proposal to be high-quality development that includes design standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. The proposal complies with most but not all of the applicable policies outlined in the Walnut Valley Focal Point Plan. The planning commission should determine compliance with LU two point eight and LU two point eight point one. The proposal does not comply with NCR two point five or NCR two point five point three as the applicant's plan to demolish the existing home located there at Russville Road. The applicant did however commit to donating those materials to an organization. And at the bottom, the planning commission should determine compliance with ED one and if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy and strengthen core industries. So looking back to your points to consider on the first one, the application incorporates similar DPCs as to what was approved for the Light Industrial Zone Parcels located east of the property on Kobe Way that was rezoned in October of 2021. And the application complies with a majority of the criteria assessed in the review process. That is all I have for the staff report, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for reading all that.
That was a lot.
Commissioners, are there any questions? All right. Thank you very much. Is the applicant or the representative here tonight, please?
Gaines Penn, 1101 College Street. I swear and affirm to tell the truth.
Thank you, Mr. Penn. Do you have anything you would like to add to this application?
The staff report was very, very comprehensive. I only have a few things I just want to bring to your attention, and that, this is part of a continuing development of the Southwest Parkway, Weston Apartments. As you know, we came before you last year for the twenty point four five acre tract to zone it Light Industrial. This is almost a mirror image in terms of the development plan conditions, just modified slightly to reflect that this, the entrances are primarily on the Southwest Parkway versus Kobe, right? And I think it is important with regard to the old home, just to point out, I think, believe that structure was built in nineteen fifty-four. We are willing to donate those salvageable building materials to like a habitat for humanity. So we're trying to good faith comply with that part. And to the, to the west of the property, I would point out that that is already like the TVA is the neighbor. So there's no really incompatible uses around this property. Darren, and one additional piece of information, Darren Wheat of Infinity Pipeline has this property under contract, and I understand that it will be developed for their, for their business. And he's here if you have any questions about the, more details about the plan. I think he presented me a copy of a concept drawing for the building, so I'd like to introduce that as exhibit. And I'm sure he's very proud of that. It's a nice looking building, and he can answer any questions that you all have. Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Penn?
Gaines, so are there, there's going to be two parcels here. Am I, am I understanding this correctly?
Currently, it is one, it is a single tract, and it is, it is not currently planned to be developed into two, two tracks, but we put a plan, a development plan condition to limit any subdivision to no more than two.
And that's within ten years.
With, yes, for a period of ten years, and that's basically to help us as we continue to develop the, this area.
It depicts a rectangular dotted line on the plat. Anyone know what that is? It's kind of toward the center?
See.
It used to be the outline of the lot of the residential site.
I see. I see. But just to be clear, what we're zoning here today is this full footprint that we see before us, correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other questions, Mr. Penn? Thank you, Gaines, for being here tonight. Is there anyone in the opposition that has questions or opposition to this request? Hearing none. I have a call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan, docket number 202243ZBG. Based upon the testimony and docket presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan. As demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further requests, this motion includes a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw. Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion approved, and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Thank you all. Our next and last item tonight is 202244Z County. Catherine Deemer, Patricia Chandler, and BNS Enterprises LLC owners, DF Property Holdings LLC, care of Thomas Floyd and Brandon Denton, applicants, have filed an application to rezone tracts of land containing approximately forty-three point one-two acres located zero two four seven three eight five Plano Road from agriculture to RM four multifamily residential and office professional commercial with a general development plan. Ms. Hurd?
Thank you, Chair Warren. We had a pre-application meeting on April the fourth for the properties you just outlined located on Plano Road with a current zoning of agriculture and a current use of agriculture. The future land use designation is mixed-use commercial. And there are two zones proposed this evening. As you're looking at the screen here, the left-hand side, this is the dividing line here. On the left is proposed to be rezoned to RM four multifamily. And then on the right-hand side, the remaining portion is proposed to be rezoned to OPC, Office Professional and Commercial. Going to jump to page two, and we'll look at a few things in the site characteristics review. You'll see from the proposed general development plan that there are multiple multifamily structures proposed for the multifamily portion of the development. The blue building depicts a proposed assisted living facility. For the residential portion of the development, you can see that the plan includes a dog park and playground area near the adjacent residential lots. During the review, the review process, staff suggested that the applicants may consider an increased setback from the adjacent single-family lots for these amenities or relocating them altogether to a more centralized location to better serve the residents of the proposed development. We did have a previous concern noted regarding fire protection. However, the applicants did supply a letter from Chief Bailey at the Plano Fire Department indicating that they were equipped to serve this development if it were to move forward. Looking at the natural features, I'll go back to the aerial view here. And some of them are kind of hidden from view under the perimeter property lines, but the applicants did commit in their development plan conditions to maintain all mature, healthy trees not existing within building envelopes, areas of utility placement, or areas of vehicular traffic or parking. Many of the proposed development areas are outside the mature tree line that runs around the perimeter of the proposed development. Staff suggested that the applicants consider preserving the mature trees in these areas. However, this was not addressed by the applicants. Looking at some things in the site design and compatibility review, I'm going to jump to the concept here. I thought we had a density map. It didn't make it way, make its way in the... Oh, it is in your packet. Page eighteen. So it did include a density map. And on this map, you'll see that the existing and approved densities in the area range from zero point eight four to thirty-one point three seven dwelling units per acre. The proposed density for the RM four portion of the development is twelve point two three dwelling units per acre. And for the OPC portion of the development, they are proposing a density of eleven point eight four dwelling units per acre for the assisted living facility. Touching a bit on the surrounding architectural features, the majority of the single-family homes in the area are one-story structures. Multifamily structures in the area are two stories. The applicants are proposing a maximum building height of three stories. Touching on open space, the maximum lot coverage in RM four is eighty-five percent, meaning a minimum of fifteen percent of the multifamily lot will be open space. OPC requires a minimum of twenty percent open space per lot. You can see from the attached, or the plan here on the screen that the plan proposes an increased amount of open space than what is required by the zoning ordinance and depicts several amenities, including a dog park, playgrounds, internal sidewalks, a pool, clubhouse, garden area, putting green, fire pit, grill area, hammocks, cornhole, and a cabana area. The DPCs for the RM four portion require the development include internal sidewalks, a community pool, a clubhouse, and amenities such as a dog park, grilling area, fire pit, or putting green. There is no requirement in the development plan conditions for the OPC portion of the development to incorporate internal sidewalks or the garden area, even though it is depicted on the site plan. On the next page, looking at connectivity, we are just making note to the... I'll summarize this paragraph. It's long. There was a memorandum of understanding that was adopted in 2017 as a result of a transportation corridor plan that was conducted by the MPO. And there were several suggestions within this memorandum of understanding regarding transportation in the Plano community and along Plano Road. The staff did suggest the incorporation of an internal street during the preliminary review process. However, what was proposed just incorporates private internal travelways, but they did propose a connection to the north that could serve the residents of the development if in the future there were a road that were to connect on the rear side of the development. This would provide improved circulation for the residents of the proposed development, but not necessarily the residents of the Plano community as a whole. Looking at pedestrian bicycle and transit facilities. Again, there's a commitment for the RM four portion to incorporate internal sidewalks, but there is no commitment for the OPC portion of the development. Looking at the area-specific policy review, this property or this development is located in the Plano Focal Point Plan area. We evaluated eleven applicable policies, and there were actually only a couple for your consideration, or a few. First being PL three, future development should be sensitive to the existing pattern of development in the area, including building orientation and setbacks. And you can see from the preliminary plan that the buildings are proposed to be located or set back a pretty good distance from Plano Road, roughly three hundred and seventy-five feet, which is greater than the front setbacks for existing buildings on the same side of Plano Road. The applicants did agree in their development plan conditions that any structure fronting Plano Road shall either be designed to face Plano Road or shall be screened by no less than six evergreen trees and three deciduous trees per one hundred linear feet. The planning commission should determine compliance with this policy. Jumping down to number thirteen, parking areas for non-residential and multifamily residential development should not be located within the building setback along Plano Road and should be located to the side and rear of the buildings when possible. The applicants agreed in the development plan conditions for the RM four portion of the development that no parking shall be placed along the frontage of Plano Road or between the buildings nearest Plano Road and Plano Road. The applicants did not address location of parking for the OPC portion of the development, and the preliminary development plan depicts parking in front of the proposed assisted living facility. The RM four portion of the request complies with PL thirteen, but the OPC portion of the request does not. Looking at PL fourteen, that references that memorandum of understanding that was adopted in 2017, which looks at access points and being intentional about where those access points are located along Plano Road and also with specific recommendations as to signal locations if those were to be implemented in this corridor in the future, one of which is planned, if warranted, at this location here at Hilldale Avenue, and they are proposing to locate the development entrance to, across from Hilldale Avenue with the requirement in the development plan conditions that the parcels interconnect to where anyone from the assisted living facility, again, if a signal is warranted, could then access the signal at Hilldale. Jumping down to the traffic impact study. Section three one four of the zoning ordinance outlines the requirements for traffic impact study. There are exemptions to this requirement if the development team in coordination with the transportation agencies, in this case, it would have been the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet and Warren County Public Works. If they can anticipate transportation improvements that may be necessary to serve the development and the developer is willing to commit to those, they do not require a traffic impact study. And so KYTC did not require a traffic impact study in lieu of the developer installing a right and left turn lane on Plano Road at the entrance of the multifamily portion of the development. And second, if and when the development meets warrants for a signal, the developer will be responsible for the installation of the signal. And the applicants did agree to these requirements. Looking at the development plan conditions, it looks long, but there are two separate sets, one for the RM four portion and one for the OPC portion. Some of them are similar, but I'll just summarize them briefly here. So this is for the RM four portion. First, it requires that all new utilities be placed underground. Two, limits the multifamily development to no more than three hundred and ninety-two units, and no building shall contain more than twenty-eight units. Three addresses access to the property and that interconnectivity that I mentioned previously. Four includes those residential amenities or some of those that I had mentioned earlier. Five identifies permitted building materials, which include brick, EFS, stone, masonry, or hardy board. Final may be used in soffits only. Six limits building height to three stories and requires uniformity in building design and color scheme. Seven prohibits plain or split-faced block as a visible foundation material. Eight addresses uniform parking and travelway lighting. Nine addresses tree preservation. Ten, they have agreed to donate any salvageable materials from any demolished structure to restore or similar agency prior to demolition. Eleven looks at building orientation and location of parking. And twelve requires that the multifamily development be under singular management. Thirteen addresses sinkholes. And fourteen addresses building orientation and screening along Plano Road. Next, touching on the OPC portion of the development, one addresses utility placement. Two limits the use of the property only to a senior living facility use. There are multiple other uses that may be permitted in the zoning ordinance in the OPC zone, but they did limit the use only to a senior living facility. Three limits the number of units within that senior living facility to one hundred and thirty-one units. Four limits the building size to one hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet of heated and cooled space and limits building height to three stories. Five looks at access and... Five looks at access and interconnectivity to the adjacent RM four parcel. Six outlines building materials, they're the same as what is proposed for the RM four portion. Seven deals with foundation materials. Eight looks at lighting. Nine addresses tree preservation. Ten, again, agrees to donating salvageable materials from demolished structures. Eleven addresses sink holes. Twelve addresses signage, requiring one monument-style sign not to exceed six feet in height with a maximum sign face area of seventy-two square feet, and that's for freestanding signage only. And then thirteen addresses building orientation or screening along Plano Road. Looking at the Focus 2030 category review, we've identified several applicable items. A few are there for your consideration. I'll touch on those. LU one point one point three, the planning commission should determine if the proposal, including the proposed building height and proximity of the dog park and playground area to the adjacent single-family lots, is compatible with the surrounding area. LU two and two point one look at quality of development and character of the area. LU two point one point one looks at open space, and again, there are several amenities that are depicted on the site plan with a requirement in the development plan conditions to incorporate some, but not all of those amenities. LU two one four, PR one point seven, and NCR one point one point six address tree preservation. And the applicants are proposing to preserve some of the existing vegetation on the property. LU two three one and TR two point one, which look at access and include transportation considerations. LU two point eight looks at the Plano focal point plan. Flipping the page over to NCR two five and NCR two five three, the proposal does not comply with these items because they're proposing to demolish the existing historic homes that are located on the property. Again, however, they did offer to donate salvageable materials from those structures prior to demolition. Next, HN one, HN one point two, and HN one point three. The planning commission should determine if the proposal, including the proposed building height, setbacks, and location of parking is compatible in field development that will maintain or improve the existing character and pattern of development within the area. And last, HN two point one and HN four. The planning commission should determine if the location of the planned development is suitable for the proposed housing type, including three-story residential buildings, and if the proposed development is believed to enhance the array of housing options in the area. Last, I'll finish on page one with our points to consider. The first, again, looks at those residential amenities and the location of those amenities and proximity to the adjacent single-family lots. Two, structures in the area range from one to two stories in height. The applicants are proposing a building height of three stories. The last part of that bullet point is no longer applicable because they did supply a letter from the Fire Department. Three, the applicants did not commit to providing open space or internal sidewalks for the assisted living facility property. And four looks at those transportation considerations and access in the future to the rear portion of the site. I think that is all for the staff report, but I am happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, comments or questions for Ms. Hurt?
I do have a question on the traffic flow where the potential light comes out there at Hilldale Drive. Would there have been a way to have, lack of a better term, reroute the traffic to move it from anywhere to not going to Plano Road?
I don't know if, are you saying, would there be a way to not allow access to Plano Road? Is that your question?
Not allow, but on the back end there, because that's an undeveloped piece of property right now. There is no way to move traffic from the back of the property out to Scottsville Road.
Not as proposed. I believe in one of the conditions, there's a reference to that being a gated entrance. Let me find it. Number three for the RM four portion, the development shall include a gated vehicular ingress and egress for its residents connecting to the property to the rear in the event the property to the rear is developed in the future. So it would be limited access only to those residents living in the development.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt?
Rachel, on the traffic's report or information you have, does it indicate that traffic will be increased, of course, with this development?
Well, they didn't require, the transportation agencies did not require a traffic impact study. But it would be increased because you're adding, you know, additional units. But I couldn't say exactly how much it would increase.
The reason I'm asking that, we see a lot of projects that, there's a lot of development going on in the Plano area, and I'm just wondering, and this is probably a question for the traffic department, but this continues to add considerable traffic in the Plano area with all the developments going on. I'm just curious as to, has anything come up in discussion, I guess with staff, any of you? Is that a concern with a lot of development going on related to Plano as far as traffic issues?
Well, I think when the, when the transportation agencies reviewed this, they requested those turn lanes, and so the applicants did agree to installing those. And then they also agreed to install a signal in the future if it's ever warranted, once the property is developed. And I'll let you add whatever.
So, I think you're asking maybe more in general, just in Plano in general, yeah. So Rachel's correct concerning this development, and they have committed to what the transportation cabinet have had requested for this particular development. But high on the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization's list is the whole corridor of Plano Road from Scottsville Road on out, really, to Plano Store and beyond at some point, certainly to the school. That is high on the priority list. It has made, a portion of it has made the six-year plan. I don't think it has been funded as far as construction, because they have designed right-of-way acquisition and so on and so forth. Has not been designed yet. There is a proposal also to straighten out the S-curves and put in a roundabout there and connect Collette Lane back to the roundabout, but that is just the planning stage. So this is one of our more frequently discussed corridors as far as transportation improvements, and it is high on our priority list.
That's the reason I raised the question.
Yes.
It just seems like, I guess, where does it stop? But anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Starks.
Yeah, sure.
Any other questions, commissioners, for Rachel?
Rachel, I mean, was it ever even looked at for doing an RM three?
It was not discussed. This has been the proposal all along since the pre-application meeting. The future land use map says that RM four is potentially compatible, and so I think that's kind of the direction they went.
I just struggle a little bit with it compatible with three stories.
Let's go back to traffic real quickly. Mr. Starks brings up a great, a great point, but if I, if I, I think I know exactly where this is at. I drove out there. It seems to me that most of this traffic has to go to one or two places. It's either going to go to Scottsville Road, or it's going to go to the interchange, because it's right between the two. Not much of this traffic is going to go beyond that, because unless they're visiting relatives or something, most of these people are going to jump on. So that first section is a little better at handling the traffic than once you get past the interchange. Now you've got the S-curves and all that, that's where it starts to really get congested as you get back out toward the, toward the school. Am I missing anything there? Is that right? They have to go to one of those two, right?
I mean, that seems reasonable.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for Ms. Hurt? Is the applicant here, or they're representative? Mr. Davenport, been told you have a long presentation, you have fifteen minutes.
Yes, sir. I appreciate that.
We appreciate it.
Be, always be worried about an attorney that says they're going to be brief, because you're in for it. Chris Davenport, on behalf of Denton Floyd, who is the applicant here, let me introduce Jared Tally. Jared, would you come up, please? Jared is with Denton Floyd. Do we have those slide shows that I sent you all? You might want to swear him in.
Make comments. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Say your name again.
Jared Tally.
Jared, your address.
Two oh nine Monahan Drive, Louisville.
Swear, tell truth.
I swear.
Thank you.
Before you take us through this real quick, you work at Denton Floyd, is that correct?
Correct.
But I understand you've got some connection with Bowling Green.
Yes, so I worked for the Denton Floyd Real Estate Group, and I was a graduate of the WKU Construction Management Program. So this, for me, is kind of a exciting opportunity to come here and propose a development in a city I spent a lot of time in and I, you know, have a personal love for.
And before he does that, we've got other representatives of Denton Floyd here with us, too. They won't be speaking, so they're just making sure Jared and I don't miss anything up. So Jared, if you'll take them through this here real quick.
So Denton Floyd is a full-service firm. We have a construction, development, and management arm. We take everything from ground to, to, you know, residents moving in. We handle everything through construction, and we turn it over to our management arm. And something that sets us apart is we do not sell our properties once we're finished completing them. We retain them, we manage them. It's a, it's kind of part of our motto that we build better communities, and we like to enter your community, bring something we're very proud of to put in the community, and we like to stay and become a neighbor with you. So I want to run through some of our past projects. So today, we're proposing a multi-family and an assisted living. The Villas of Jeffersonville is a built, completed project in Jeffersonville, Indiana. It is the same footprint that we're proposing here. We've got the Lakeside Gardens, which is another completed project. That one is also in Jeffersonville, Indiana. It is a very similar product, similar building, same amenities that we're proposing today. And then here is the Bridgepoint Gardens Assisted Living. It is also in Jeffersonville. This is a exact example of the assisted living we're proposing. Slate Apartments is another example of a completed project, well, an in-progress project near completion for our multi-family. Something that sets our multi-family apart is we consider it Class A, and what we call Class A is the amenities and finishes we offer. Some of the amenities include the clubhouse, which is a resort-style clubhouse. Go to the back to give you guys some reference to follow along. So the clubhouse has hardy board siding and brick. We also include masonry in the entrance. The pool area has a lot of attractions for residents and a lot of community-based amenities, some of which include the fire tables, the, the pool. We've got a fitness center, we've got a community kitchen, we do do a dog park and playgrounds. And we really like to emphasize that this is a community space, and we go into the details of such as with the fire table, we propose a square elongated fire table. And I know that's a very, you know, weird detail, but we have found through completing multiple of these projects that a round fire table can be kind of exclusive. So proposing something like a square elongated fire table allows for conversations and new connections to be made. This is a rendering of the proposal today for the assisted living. It is a three-story assisted living with, with plenty of space inside. The residents will enjoy having the access to a chapel. They will have a restaurant inside, there's a theater. We have a garden outside, and this does include a memory care wing in the rear. So, yep, that's, that's kind of our building's summarized. We're very excited to have this opportunity today to propose this, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at the end.
Commissioners, any questions right now, or not? And then Mr. Davenport.
Under no circumstances y'all will sell it?
Not under no circumstances.
I'm just saying, I'm just going by what you said.
That's not their, I think it's fair to say that's not their business model. That's not been their practice. Hopefully, they're never in a position to have to sell, but, you know, you never...
You'd like to be in a position to do it.
Sometimes you would be. But that, at least that's not their business model. Thanks, Jared. Let me, as always, Rachel did a great job with the presentation. I always want to hit some highlights. This is flume compliant, y'all know that because we're not here on a flume night. So you know it's flume compliant. The densities, I would submit to you, are incredibly reasonable. They are at twelve point two on the multi-family. They are at eleven point eight on the OPC, the assisted living. That compares to fourteen units, fifteen units, thirty-one units in the immediate vicinity. The most recent, I think, is the Magnolia, multi-family, next door at thirty-one units an acre. One thing that I want to stress is that we in this community see the need, I think, greatly right now for housing. We are inundated with news stories about that. And we are particularly in the need for housing for first-time homeowners and renters. But what I think that we may not yet see coming is the coming tsunami of the other end of that spectrum, and that is the assisted living facilities. It only stands to reason, if we are this behind early in the life cycle, we're going to be behind in the later part of the life cycle. And frankly, Denton Floyd wouldn't be here if their research doesn't say that's true. So I think the assisted living parcel of this is particularly a great idea and something the community needs. I will highlight a few other things here. Obviously, the materials are, to say they're top shelf would be understating. They are the, the most stringent material restrictions you're going to find. The policies, when you look at the policies the staff have given you, they've only given you two that are out of compliance, one of which deals with the two homes that will be demolished. As I've stated before, I think we're, we probably cast a really wide net when we talk about historical homes. I think that definition is like anything older than fifty years that we have agreed to donate. Secondly, the other policy that I think is actually a strength of the proposal is that our setbacks are not consistent with those along Plano Road. The reason they're not consistent is we're showing structures roughly one football field off of Plano Road. Frankly, I see that as a strength. And when we talk about the coming road improvements to Plano Road and right-of-way acquisition, that's going to be a real strength, and that's going to be something that the State Highway Department really likes when they start buying right-of-way. They did not require us to donate that land in the future. Sometimes they do that. Y'all see that as a DPC. They didn't do that here. I think the reason why, they're not worried about acquiring property when, when all it is, is frontage with a three-hundred-foot setback to the structures, I would assume. So I actually see that variance as a strength here. So those are the points that I really want to stress upon. The amenities are the best that I've seen in presenting these applications to you all. They've picked a spot here that's consistent with the flume, which I think is mixed-use commercial, I think I'm remembering that right. And so that, in conjunction with assisted living, I think this is an absolute great project that's being proposed. I'm happy to answer any questions y'all may have.
Chris, it certainly looks like an attractive property, without a doubt. If I may, could we go to those existing properties? I know staff had some, some questions about that. Sometimes those existing properties can be an asset to the Fire Department. Currently, this is the Plano Fire Department, is that right?
Correct.
Would you consult with your client and see if they would provide, would allow us to do training? To do training?
There's no problem at all.
Yeah.
To offer those before they're demolished.
And, and I've talked to a couple of the guys that are on that, that department. The more, the more lead time we can give them, the better, because we are dealing with volunteers. So if we could say, you guys could train here for the next sixty days or ninety days, it helps them because they, sometimes when they're scheduling their, their, their training, some of those guys have to get off work for that period of time, but they can get it all set up. And they don't burn the structure, they ju- all set up, and they don't burn the structure, they just, they just do regular training.
We can agree to that, and I would specifically say that the developer will offer to the Plano Fire Department any existing structures for training purposes for a window no less than 90 days.
Does that, does that need to be a DPC, or is that just a verbal agreement that we?
Obviously, could be, but I hate to mess up the.
That's fine. Yeah, that's, that's perfect. Thank you.
I'd ask Mr. Davenport to write you, write maybe the staff a letter. I'm happy to do that. They'll be happy to receive it, I'm sure. Any other questions I can answer for y'all?
Chris, I only had one other question. And this may be to, is it Jared? The other facilities that's been developed, are they in areas similar to Plano? Are they developed in areas similar to Plano? The previous, okay.
Yeah, some of our developments are in more busier areas. But, yeah, it's very similar to the Plano.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Starks. Commissioners, any other questions? Thank you, Chris. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that has questions or opposition to this Okay, I would call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with and condition upon our general development plan, docket number 202242, county. Based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further questions from motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Shaw.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale. Commissioner Volker. And Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. The motion is approved, and will go to the Bowling Green City Commission for final approval. Is there any other new business tonight, Ben? Our next meeting will be June, the 14 days, excuse me, July 16th? Correct. Seven. I was looking June 2nd, I apologize. So anyway, it's going to be, it's going to be the 3rd Thursday in, in July, so. All right. Thank you all for being here tonight, and appreciate you guys driving down from Louisville. Have safe travels home.